Morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us at Bourbon County Commission Meeting, February 23rd. Looks like we've got a good agenda, so we'll move right along. A consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from 14th.
I second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable for this week.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I said both. I said payroll and accounts payable.
Yes.
Oh, you mean in that paperwork? I don't know what paperwork you got.
We mentioned that Jennifer...
What I mean, we're not going to...
Did I include that agenda this morning? We were able to get the payroll reports done, so I have some entries if anybody wants payroll report. No, it wasn't in what I sent out the other day, though.
Eric Bailey, Department of Dates, please. How are you, Eric?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. What's up this fine day in Bourbon County?
A little chilly out this morning.
Little goo.
Kind of like that 40 and 60 degree weather, but it is February, so... A little update on the sidewalk project out here. As soon as we can get the water pumped out down at the west end, we will try and pour the rest of the curb, or the gutter, I should say. The... That may be as early as today if everybody can... They can get thawed out, out at the batch plant, and we can get the water out of there. We'll try and get that poured, then we'll pour the parking and be out.
I do have a question for that.
Okay.
I'm sure you've met the City of Fort Scott, going to address that water.
I...
It's coming, looks like maybe across the street, because it runs across the street, and pools up right there.
I know they've looked at it. I'm not exactly for sure what their plans are, but I know they are aware of it and have looked at it and know that there is an issue there with the water, so...
Possibly, one of us can meet the city manager and ask him.
Sure, okay. Yeah, that's up to you. Heads up on Purple Wave, our crusher is now listed to sell March 21st. Currently, they have some wrong contact information on there. We've already made contact to get that changed, and I know there is some interest already because I've received some phone calls.
Good.
So anyhow, give you a heads up on that. Rock Crusher is currently headed to Humboldt as we speak, get it fixed, back up and going. They expect about three days of being down. I will say that the manufacturers, engineers were here this past week, they're kind of going across the country, but they did stop by and look at our machine and look at the issues and what have you, and had a good conversation with them, good visit with them. So anyhow, we are moving forward with that. We're also clearing some overburden up at Beth, so we can get another blast in while we're there and do another 40,000. That'll be for this year.
Where's that?
At Beth.
Beth.
Yep.
Did that drum actually crack, or did it break on a weld, or...
Broke a piece out where there's... I don't know, there's an insert there where you can screw something into it, and it just broke out there.
Interesting.
First one that they've had ever happen, so of course it would be our luck that it would be us. But anyhow, it is all under warranty and they are taking care of it.
Good.
Getting it fixed. Ditching machine that we purchased off Purple Wave, we have it up and running. We're up in the Mapleton area, kind of working on some areas up there, and then we'll... We're going to try and move it around every two to three weeks, try and get to a different district, but that is working very well on getting water moving.
Good.
It's going to take us a little bit to get used to the machine, being able to drive straight line, figure out our depth, getting everything worked out, but we are able to open up some ditches and get some water moving, so...
Who's your operator?
TJ Newman is operating the...
A good operator.
Very good operator, very good, so...
Good.
He's doing a great job with it. We did get our M Shaw inspection last week, had two violations, very minimal. One of them was the dimmer switch on the fuel truck, or the headlights on the fuel truck, and I know they were working because I was there the previous week and they were testing everything, but the spring and the dimmer switch broke and just happened to be one thing that they checked. So anyhow, we got that fixed, and then also a sheet at the front of our notebook, when you open up our notebook, had somebody's name, I forget whose name was on it, but it had a name on there that wasn't supposed to be on there. So anyhow, those are the two things that we got wrote up with, that is corrected, and so...
You had a very good inspection, then?
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah.
And as we all know, if you know M Shaw very well, each inspector is different. That will pass this time, won't pass next time.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
But thank you, that's a good report, so...
And then also, we're going around cleaning up some dead trees and what have you throughout the county, using our lift that we have, and trying to get some of those taken care of. Our lift went down on us the other day, so we had to work in some parts, but it's back up and going today, so we'll be getting back to taking down some dead trees in the right of way and getting them removed. Also, something I want you to think about, we don't have to make any decisions or anything, but got a contact from City of Fort Scott Coates Department on townwide cleanup, if we would have any interest on maybe waiving fees, reducing fees for our MSW. I don't know your thoughts on it, but we are down to the bare bones on what...
Well, my first thought is remembering the last time we did this, it's very expensive to take that waste out of County.
It is.
And the last time it was free to the city, and the county paid the fees at the gate. And don't quote me, but it was several $5,000 to $6,000 that we lost, helping the city out.
Mm-hmm.
So my initial thought was, it's okay, we participate, they got to help with this cost.
Yeah.
I don't know what Clifton thinks, or Nelson will think, but I don't want Bourbon County to lose $6,000 again.
Right. And I think, just my opinion, but if we do it, we need to do it countywide, too. It's not just for the City of Fort Scott, we need to do for Bourbon County when we do this, so...
It might be...
If we do it.
Might be something the city want to do, do roll-offs throughout the city.
City.
They pay a contractor to take it straight out of County, and they don't have to deal with Bourbon County.
Yeah.
So, but the tough part back then, no one really policed it, and they had some roll-offs, and we had solid waste in there, we had tires, which of course, you know...
Absolutely.
We can't take it out here without sorting it.
Everything's got to be sorted.
It was a mess, anyway.
Yeah, so I will come back to you on this, I just kind of wanted to get it out, out in the opens, we'll be thinking on it, we'll wait till Nelson...
I agree with Jim, I mean, it's a great idea, but I'm probably not for that.
Okay.
I mean, Jim, I mean, if there was... I mean, I don't know how you regulate that fairly.
Well, again, if they use roll-offs, they don't need Bourbon County's participants. They just put it... And they did that early on, but we use dump trucks, called Earth Day a long, long time ago.
Long time ago.
But yeah, used with city, they...
Yeah, absolutely.
But they can station those around and just take them directly out of County, and nothing has to be sorted, and it's going to be about the same cost as they're sharing with us, so... But I encourage you to visit with them.
Yep, okay. All right. That is all I have. Do you have anything for me?
We have an executive session, I know.
Yeah.
The lady up in the northwest had that low water crossing I talked to you about, she said, "Thank you, you guys did a great job fixing it, so thank you to Bourbon County and thank you, Eric Bailey."
And we're going to thank Jerry Heckman. He went up there and very good with his blades.
She loved it, so she called yesterday and said, "Make sure I shared it with you."
Good deal, good deal, good deal.
I guess you probably haven't gotten any further on your skid loader, that was just real recent.
No, no, no. Yeah, so we got to sit down and talk about that. We've had a motor go bad on a skid steer, so I want to kind of get some pricing around, see what we spent on it up to date, and kind of do some other talking, and visit with Jim a little bit about it, and...
We had some issues with it when it was new.
Right.
So I would encourage you to invite Travis...
Yes.
Do one-on-one with us.
Yes.
It has not been a good one.
Right. So... And I don't know if you need to make a motion or anything for Jim to be able to sit down with us since it was during his time when it was bought, or how you want to...
I don't think so, but I don't mind. I mean, I make a motion, Jim can...
Well, I'm sure Travis, the problem we had day one.
Previously.
I don't know that we need a motion for that, but I'm... I mean, that's... Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I second it, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll let you know whenever the meeting is.
Okay.
I think he may be coming through here fairly soon, maybe before even next Thursday, so we'll... I'll let you know for sure.
I'm good, anything, except spring break.
Okay.
I'm out of here.
Okay.
Camping with my grandson.
I understand. That is all I have, other than executive session and who do I know?
Who you want in?
Susan not in here.
Who?
She's here.
I can call her.
Take Jennifer, Jennifer and I will be fine.
You don't need Susan?
If she can be here, it'd be great.
How long?
Five, seven minutes, 10 minutes, whatever you think.
We don't know what it's about, so...
It's not going to be, okay?
Five minutes is tough.
Let's go seven.
For... And you want Jennifer, Susan?
And commission.
Okay.
I just need to update you.
Morning.
Okay. Make a motion to go an executive session, case A 75-4319B1, to discuss personal matters of individual non-elective personnel, protect their privacy. Two commissioners, Eric Bailey, Jennifer Hawkins, Susan Bancroft. We're going to do it for seven minutes, so we'll return here at 9:21.
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry. Eagle Road discussion. You red button on?
It's on you too.
You're being broadcast.
I hear you at home.
You're on TV. You're on TV, buddy.
You can't sit down if you want.
Yeah, you can sit down.
Well, I'll try not to be up here too long. I want to start out by thanking the commissioners and the road boss for the job they do. I know you hear a lot of bitching and complaining and lucky if you can make 10% of the people happy. But I appreciate you guys being in the spots you're at and doing what you're doing. A brief history on Eagle Road, and I'm going to do all this from memory. I didn't even have time to make notes, so I'm in trouble. But I've got access to a newspaper article that Eagle Road, which used to be called Garland Road, was put into a hard-surfaced road in 1928. And I believe that to be from 250th Street, the four-way stop, the old Military Road to the state line. So it's been in pavement that long, you know, pushing 100 years. And I think from the Military Road to 69 Highway was made hard-surfaced when new 69 Highway was built. So it's been a paved road for over 50 years. And, you know, people kind of base where they buy a house or build a house, or how they get from here to there, on the roads you've got to deal with. Nobody likes living on a paved road and then having it turned into gravel. And I think because of complaints from residents and people in the area, the commissioners had to make a decision on what to do about Eagle Road because the paved road got in very poor condition and had lots of potholes and there were safety issues about it. So everybody was complaining about that, and they had to make a decision what to do. The bad thing was that they didn't have a public meeting about it or anything. They made a decision around four years ago to, because of the safety issues and concerns, just to tear it out and turn it into a gravel road, which it had not been in over 50 years. And that got everybody's attention. And of course, nobody in the area was happy about it, but I understand they needed to do something. I just feel like they shouldn't have done it without talking or having a public meeting. Anyway, ever since then, a lot of us have been complaining and concerned and wanting something done about it. We're very thankful for what got done, the seven miles of paving or whatever on 250th Street, the old Military Road, and knew that that would hold things up, getting anything done about Eagle Road because the county had to spend so much money doing that repaving. And that's given us a better alternate route to get to town without a terrible road. But a lot of people still have to use Eagle Road, and it's a real dust problem on that road. Anyway, after that got torn out, turned to gravel, it's been a problem ever since. And we've been patient and kind of got on the back burner because of all the money that was spent doing other roads in District Two. But mainly, I wanted to bring it up again because our commissioner, Jim Harris, when he was running for county commission on the last election, he committed to us that in his first term, he would try and get the Military Road paved and Eagle Road paved. And he was able to accomplish doing the Military Road, but we haven't done anything with Eagle Road yet. And I know it's, the cost used to be like $110,000 a mile to do paving, probably higher than that now because everything's higher. So it would be really hard with the budget they've got to do all of it in one year. I know that. But if we could at least get one mile of Eagle Road paved, that would be a start. And then hopefully, over the next couple of years, get the other two miles done. That's what I would ask of the commission.
George, I'll certainly respond, of course. Thank you for coming, Mr. Howard, or you, sir. Gentlemen in the rear, George is right. The previous commission of District Two did turn that road back in gravel, reclaiming it because of the condition, complaints from the bus drivers, et cetera. And the previous commission did comment he would do everything possible, get it back to asphalt. And I did during my campaign say I would do everything I can to get that road overlaid. But let me tell you where we're at. We're getting ready to have a work session next couple of weeks. And we'll visit with Public Works Director Eric Baylin, would decide to hold the money, et cetera. Now, last year, District Two and District One got a lot of, because we did the Military Road. District Three didn't get much. So District Three gets a lot this year. I'm going to tell you that. But working with Eric, we're doing everything possible budget-wise to do one mile on Eagle Road. It'd be the West Mile. I asked, I begged, I've looked for state money, and Eric's working hard to come up some money. And it really depends on what comes up the work session. Because again, Mr. Beth does have first choice this year because of what we've done in the past. So we've got to work around that. We've got to keep our word with him. But I have high expectations. We're going to get something done. And with the thickness we have to build that road with, because of the grain trucks, which is 80,000 pounds, which is great, we have to build a pretty thick road. It's going to be about 250,000 a mile. And it's three miles, but we're going to do everything we can to get some footage done this year. And I hope it's a full mile. But what's left, I'm going to ask Eric to go as far as you can east overland. So that's my goal, and hopefully do some more next year. And next year would be more my turn, and District Two should have more money, again, like we did on the Military Road. But we have to kind of take turns spreading the wealth because there's only so much money in the deal. But again, that work session within the next couple of weeks, we'll make some decisions. And Eagle Road for Jim Harris and District Two is a high priority. And I'm going to beg for money until we get it done. So, yes.
In the meantime, is there something you can do to keep the dust down on a more regular basis?
Well, we could, we could tie drag it and do some oil, but that falls apart quickly and people complain about it, so.
So what do we, I mean, yeah, no, no, the problem, I mean, the problem with that is there's thousands of miles of gravel road. We'd have to, you know, we can't do one for one and one off the other. I mean, you know, in my opinion. So you don't need me to talk on it.
Yeah, we're going to do everything we can. I'll let you know when that work session is. I'd like for you to attend it. Give us your input, and we'll share with you what our sales tax expectations are. We're even looking at possible grants that would help do the whole three miles instead of just one. But it is on our radar. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to work hard to get it done. Yes.
Is there something you guys can do to slow down the traffic? Because I, the area where I live, I know most of the traffic goes over 50 miles per hour. And I mean, it, I don't understand why people want to drive that fast on such a dusty road. But it's not, you're making it dangerous for all the other people.
Right, it would be.
And there's been a lot of accidents on that road, I feel, since it's turned to gravel.
Is there a speed limit signs it?
I don't think it's supposed to have any speed limit, which makes it 55. We could, we could lower it if the commission chose to.
Yeah, last time I came to a meeting, they asked for like 40 mile an hour of speed limit or something.
Rest of your folks on Eagle Road, are you okay with 40?
If it's back paved, I'd love to see it 40.
It's only as good as it's enforced.
I mean, all we can do is have Eric put the signs up. We can't enforce it. That's the sheriff that has to do that.
Okay, you don't, yeah, sure.
Again, we can enforce it. The sheriff's department has to enforce it, but we can absolutely.
You okay with 40, Clifton?
I don't, I mean, I don't care if you make it 30. I'd be fine, I'd be fine with every gravel road 30 in the town.
I think we have 40 mile an hour signs. I don't think we have 45. Okay, I'll make a motion to post Eagle Road from 69 Highway to 250th, that three-mile stretch at 40 miles per hour. And our Public Works Director will post that. If you have complaints, call your sheriff department, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Got that, Eric?
Was that 40 or 45?
40.
40.
Okay. And George, I'll let you know, and Larry, just because I have your phone number, when the work session is. It's going to come up pretty quick. So we want you to come to it, give us your input, listen and learn, and see how we get to where we get. So it's a process. And I know, I know one area that Clifton has seven miles that needs it, hasn't been touched in years. So we've got to address that. But District One and Two got some pretty good roads last year, but maybe we, maybe the sales tax will be up and we can pull more money for Eagle Road. We hope. That's my plan. But I did do the Military Road like I promised. I'm halfway there. I just got to get the other half.
That should bring in more sales tax, too.
Yeah. Well, we'll get you guys to spend more money in town. I bet you do, Larry. Okay, anything else, gentlemen? Eagle Road. Well, thank you for coming. I'll let you know. Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Where's, where's this road coach around, Laura? Would they be interested in knowing?
Laura, hold. Laura, you have the floor.
Is Eric still here?
Yeah.
Yes, Eric is still here. I made several maps. As you know, our map committee, our road committee, has been working on trying to come up with one, one map.
One map.
Well, we have four maps, and on this particular one, none of them match. Our SAM, which is the first two maps that I gave you in your packet, and our SAM map shows that we have the road stopping at Victory Road. Because on the first map, I made it to where it goes a little bit farther. And you see where Limestone Creek goes farther down. There was, it used to go all the way down, but there's a low-water bridge there that is unpassable. And so somewhere, and I'm sure that it's probably in a commission meeting, journal, somewhere, because as you know, several months back, probably a year or so ago, when I first started taking on the road records, I went through all the road closings and tried to get the road records up to date. And that's when our committee was first formed. And this road closure was not in there as closing. It showed a road going on farther down on 75th. Our SAM map does not show that the road goes any farther. Our road record map doesn't, it shows it going on farther down. So does the map that's right behind you, hanging on the wall. If you look at this map here, which is our road record map, it doesn't even look, it doesn't look nothing like any of our maps. And so this was the one that was back in the 1800s and all.
Eric, I can't even find this on Onyx. Can you help me find this on Onyx?
The gentleman that owns both sides, which is Brett and Kyle, well, brothers, Brett and Kyle Oswald, he just wants something that says, we need a resolution that says that that road stops at Victory Lane.
Okay. Does it do anything for the mile north? I mean, is there any problem with landlocking anyone or?
No, it does not landlock anybody. He owns it. According to our Orion with Matt, Matt's not here today, he's already paying taxes on it because we already have it on our, on our SAM map. He's already paying taxes on it because it's undrivable. And he's, they've been paying taxes on it.
It just needs something official.
It just needs something official as a resolution that states, so I can get it put in the road records, that states that it stops at Victory Lane.
Eric, you have any comments, thoughts, opinions?
So I'm not what you're calling Victory Lane.
Or Victory Road.
Okay, okay, okay.
You see it on here?
Yeah, 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 I got it. I just didn't see a Victory Lane.
It's where their houses.
Yes, yes.
One sits on the north and one sits on the south, and that is their homes.
I believe I've been out there. Laura came to me this morning on this. I believe I have been there. I, if it's the property I'm thinking of, I don't think there's any issues on closing that other section. I mean, the same owner, I was around on every side of it, so.
And Matt drove it last week, and you cannot get down that road.
Yeah.
Past Victory. You cannot get down that road.
I believe I was out there a year ago, and I think that is a very fair statement. There's just, there's no way to get down. I think there's a, what I call a goat path to go down, down there, but other than that.
That is pretty much what Matt said.
Do you want the resolution to say one mile north of Victory or just?
Just that the road ends at Victory Road.
On 75th.
On 75th.
North of there. Is there any more road before you get to Lynn County?
There is.
There is, yes. Because it goes to 65th, and then, well.
787 yards worth of road, according to my deal here, so.
And I didn't do any research yet. We haven't. We're not working north yet. We're, we're working south is where we've been kind of, we haven't got in that area. The only time we're working in that area is if somebody brings it to our attention.
So it's 2,300 feet, or give or take. So I guess that would be, I don't, I'm fine doing that personally. But I think because 75th Street goes all the way south, we just can't say closed south of Victory Road. So it's going to have to, it's going to have to be, you know, 2,361 feet south of Victory. Something, in my opinion, that's the only way I would feel comfortable doing it, because 75th Street goes all the way to Crawford County.
Resolution needs to have a starting point and a finish.
And an end.
Okay, I can get Jennifer the exact measurements.
I mean. It looks like on the other side, there's a house or something south of there quite a ways that the drive ends right there as well. So I would say.
I'm good with it. We just have to get the language right.
Yep, I'm, I'm good. No problem.
Thank you.
I will inform him that we will be getting a resolution, and I will have that ready for you guys by next Thursday.
Thank you. We'll be here.
Thanks, Lord willing.
So Jennifer, would you put me down to have that resolution for next Thursday, please? Thank you, gentlemen.
Is, um.
Short break, Eric?
Yeah.
Going to take a short break.
How much rain did you hit at your house, Jennifer? I don't have a rain gauge.
I didn't see a crack really, but it's just like 90 degrees out there. There's a causeway out there and it's been a blower because they have a hole in the causeway. We haven't seen it fixed. And if it's up to the guy on the, the farmers do use that to get across. Anyway, if it's up to the guy on the other side, the other side, he would like to just open that wood down because it's been time long, which kids go down there and fish and stuff. I can understand they have some problems down there because they have drugies pulling down there. That's why they sold it. They get down there shooting, you know, and drugs. But that, that's also an issue. My son was down there one time. He was picking up a trang.
That's why I was just saying.
No, no, he was, he was, it wasn't his property. He was down picking it up and doing the civic thing. Next thing you know, this guy took it and pulled it down. And I will say this, my son, secretly, he goes and went back to his car and pulled it in. That's what she wanted. She'd add over my kid. Because they don't own the river. And the river is used for fishing. They go to causeways and they have to boat up. Well, I was a kid. That, that crossing was in concrete. It was just a little water crossing. They throw a little, the only time you use it was a little blow, but they took it upon themselves. And the county actually moved toward that grid. And he had, he had to stay in that spot. Probably when I was in like teens. And so that's, I'm six six years old, so. It lasted that long. It was amazing how they did that. Truly waiting, about dry. And the county did it with approval. And they put a wing ball out there and shoved the water this direction. They poured half of it. And once it parted enough, they were going to put a wing ball on the other side. It was never. But that's what's happening with a lot of places of that area. People come in and party hard because they just try to shoot up the plate.
Okay, we'll go back in session if you're ready, Cliff.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Terry's not here. I don't reckon, but, I mean, I think this is a meet and greet for Dr. Kremsek, I believe.
Yep.
Is what she's trying to, or do you know this?
Yes, Terry is actually at training. So she, they've invited you guys to a meet and greet for Dr. Kremsek. He's the new medical director. It's going to be on the 6th at noon at the EMS station. So we just need a motion where you all to attend if you choose to.
I intend to be there.
I make a motion that it's quite possible that the three commissioners would be in attendance at a meet and greet for our new medical director for the EMS, for our EMS. It's March 6th at 12:00 PM. No business would be conducted.
I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, county clerk.
And then we have two license renewals for Casey Mart. This is for south of town. They have a liquor license for consumption on and off premises. I just have these. Those are for the chairman to sign in the bottom corner.
So let's say, I make a motion to approve these license permits. It looks like it's number 214 and number 215 to be for Casey Mart. And it's located at 946 Highway 69, Fort Scott.
And allow the chairman to sign on.
And to allow the chairman to sign these.
I'd second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Jennifer. Is that it? Okay. Okay. Jim Harris, discussion of feasibility study grant for overpass. Some of you know, and some of you, we've been discussing for a few months, the possibility of placing an overpass somewhere in the south end of Fort Scott. One location could be Jayhawk Road. I'm not saying that's the final destination. But the city did one 10 years ago, and I don't know where it went. But we have a lot of problems out the southern end of our town to get emergency traffic to the south and to the east of the south end of Fort Scott. It's landlocked because the train sits there. And we don't want to make the trains mad because they have the right to be there so long. But we have to try to figure out a way to get the emergency personnel across that track, and the easiest would be an overpass. So my request is from the commission to allow me to work with Ready on applying for a grant for feasibility study for an overpass on the south end of Fort Scott. Not a grant to build, a grant to do the study, because we have to have a study before we could apply for a grant to build it. So my request from fellow commissioner to allow me to work with Ready and apply for a grant due to the study for an overpass on the south end of Fort Scott. That's my motion.
I mean, I second it. I'll have discussion.
Yeah, in discussion.
Yes. So I think you'll find that there's already money there.
Yeah.
To do it. Just based off the email I got, and you probably got it, Nelson probably got it, a while back from the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning, Planning, whatever, blah, blah, blah. The money should be there to do it. So there shouldn't have to go after a grant because the grant's already been passed.
And that's something we'll, we'll find out.
So.
I work with Ready and.
Now, with that said, sorry, go ahead.
We might not have to apply for a grant. Regional Planning Commission might already have the funds. We can do this. So anyway, I want to start the process.
Would you want to apply for a grant anyway, say, in part?
Well, they might have grant money they've already received for a project like this.
Yeah, can you come in here?
That's our first question, so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the money's already there. So did you, whoever said that?
Mr. Oberg.
So the Regional Planning Commission of Southeast Kansas received a $800,000 grant from the federal government to do a large-scale regional feasibility study on road projects in Southeast Kansas. So we can, so the counties within that area can, can have those, that, basically the engineering studies for certain road projects. Now, what I will tell you is that this group is going to come back after they have this study, which will take several probably years because it's Southeast Kansas. I'd say a couple of years to get it completely done. But they're going to come back and make recommendations on which projects that we should do. So Jayhawk might not be one of the projects. They're, we don't get to really say, hey, we want this to be the project you engineer. They're doing a complete study on every county, countywide. So it's bridges, roads, anything, road and bridge and infrastructure included. So that could be one that they do, and suggests that we do. But it could also be the bridge on 215th Street. It could be a road that you guys are talking about already. And then, in order to participate in that, the county, the Bourbon County is going to have to pay $2,200 to the S E K to participate, because every county paid a certain amount in that wanted to participate. And so that's. No, no, we, 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 yes, but no, we would have been, but they're going to go ahead and allow counties to participate because the sole reason, I can't say the sole reason, but one of the biggest reasons they got the grant was because it was, it was the only region in the United States that was chosen. So because it was a 17-county region, that was one of the biggest reasons that they received the grant. So they want to be able to, to continue what they said that they were going to do.
I mean, they absolutely used our county. And they absolutely used our county.
Oh, God, yeah. They, they, they put our county in it.
I've got an email that shows that they used our county for their application, so.
I'd like to comment.
And we're not the only ones. Cherokee, Bourbon, I think, Anderson, there were several that didn't pay, yeah.
My comment would be, this is a good route to go, but if it's three years to take us, even get approval for a study, I don't want to do it that way.
Sure, sure. I, I'm just saying, because they're doing so many counties, that's why it takes so long. Now, if they start in Bourbon and work their way south, then ours won't be three years. It'll be within the next year. But it depends where they start and how many engineers they put on the ground. And, and, and the regional planning commission just received this grant last two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, anyway. So they haven't even started to go out for bids for engineers and everything. But there is money there to do a regional engineering study, so that would be on a large scale.
Question about jazz, my approval was you and I work together and move forward on this.
Sure.
And meet with the regional planning commission and see what route we want to go.
Yeah, I mean, and we can, we can, we can do that. We can move forward with a grant and look at a grant for engineering study, see what it would be. And then I can work with the regional planning commission and say, hey, we're going to go out for this engineering study grant. What's the timeline on yours? And they might say, don't do that, because we could have you something within the next few months. But if they don't, then, yeah, that's fine.
I think a home of KDOT, too.
KDOT.
Good. And I don't know if the study part of it would require the railroad, but it, they may have a stake in it, too, because it, they, they're affected by the situation. There's a statute that talks about how they have to pay.
Five percent.
Percent of the project, so. You might ask about the study.
Yeah, that was, that was my next comment, let's get the railroad involved, because we would close that crossing. That's a very valuable deal for the railroad.
Well, yeah, we talked to them, what, seven months ago, eight months ago, Susan? And that, yeah, they're required by law to pay five percent of any project that closes a railroad crossing, because they were required to put the safety features up. And so they're required to, you know, so. But there is specific engineering that goes into that, so you would have to definitely consult with BNSF Engineering Firm on how to, yeah, it's, it'd be a huge project, so.
Okay. Any other further discussion? I made a motion. You second? Are you going to get a second? Have we had discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Request an executive session for seven minutes, just you and I, Clifton.
I make a motion, go into executive session. Case A 75 to 43, 19B1, to discuss personal matters of individuals on look, personal privacy, job performance. Be for seven minutes, be the two commissioners. We return here at, what would that be, 10:02?
I second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Make motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second it. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Public comments.
It's already on.
Oh, thank you, sir.
How's Mr. Reed today?
I'm all right.
Good, good.
I am standing in for Sheriff Bill Martin. He could not be here today. He had a prior commitment, but he asked that I bring this letter presented to the commission on his behalf. It's in reference to the computer policy that was passed a few weeks ago. Madam Clerk, if... Did I give you a copy, Jeff, or...
Yes, you did, Jeff.
Okay. If you will... Bill asked that if you would file stamp it and email it to him. I'm not answering any questions. Please wait and do that upon Sheriff Martin's return. I'm just the guy that's delivering it.
I will make a comment.
Go ahead.
I don't think this commission has ever expressed that we have any jurisdiction over Bill's employees, and I'm not sure why he would pay attorney me to say that.
Don't know.
I agree.
Thank you.
Especially out of taxpayers' money.
Yeah, taxpayer's money, and we've never tried to tell Bill how to manage his employees. We don't have... You go ahead, Justin.
No.
We don't have jurisdiction other elected employees.
I was just asked to deliver it. I did my job.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
All right, Bobby. Thank you, sir. Other public comments?
Yes.
Just a question. The county clerk was so gracious to run off salaries and things when he was employed by the county.
Wait till you get the bill.
Huh?
Wait till you get that big bill. I'm joking.
I don't care. It worked for me. I mean, the only question I had, and it's not a major question. We have a county counselor, Mr. Meeks, and he's also working... Is it true that he also works as the assistant county attorney here?
Uh-huh.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I thought, you know, some things are outdated, and I just wanted to reaffirm that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Public comment?
I'm afraid so.
You're afraid so? That doesn't sound good.
I'd like to call an executive session to move the meetings till 12 o'clock. Nine o'clock's too early.
You might have a problem getting a second on that.
Well, let's go into executive session and talk about it. I might have doughnuts back there or something.
Cotton candy or something.
I have one question on the... We'll just go to semantics here. On page nine of your accounts payable...
Okay.
There is a... An account that says a reserve account to Amazon Capital Services. I'm assuming that's an Amazon credit card. Why would we set up a reserve account under an Amazon credit card?
That... We are paying Amazon out of the computer equipment reserve fund that the county has.
So it's not actually a reserve account? It's actually you're making a payment to Amazon?
We are making a payment to...
Out of the reserve account.
Out of that reserve account.
Okay, that answers that. And then I have... What are we gonna... I thought we already set this work session for the road... To discuss roads.
We talked about it, but we never set a date. We talked about doing it some late morning.
Well, let's stop talking about it, and let's start setting it, because...
Well, there's no more to it than that.
Okay.
We gotta make sure Mr. Bailey's ready.
We're currently waiting on another individual to come visit with us in regards to chip and sealing. He's had... We've tried to meet three times now, and he's had a personal medical issue with a family member that he's had to address each time, so I think the ICE may have taken a toll on one of the family members, so they're trying to get everything lined out. But we are scheduled for next Tuesday for him to be here to visit with us. Then once he visits, then I can get the pricing and everything, so I can have some estimates for our commission to be able to determine what we can do, what we cannot do with the funding that we have.
Okay, so while you're here...
We lack some information.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So let me bring something to your attention that I would like you to look at before the work session. On Poplar Road, the bridge over Wolverine Creek is pathetic.
Okay.
And it's dangerous for the school buses. You can see through the bottom of it to Wolverine Creek, not from the sides, through the middle.
Okay.
And I think we should pave that road from 69 to 235th. It's the only exit road that's not paved.
Is that the one...
No, that's not true.
One-lane bridge?
That's not true.
Which... Well, which one is? That wagon road?
Wagon road is not paved.
Well, in one direction it is.
That's state.
On the east... On the west side of...
West is state.
State highway.
Okay, well, then let's make Poplar Road a state road then.
Can you get that done for us, please?
If you can do that, that'd be great.
But the bridge is the worst problem.
I will look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
There was something else, but I forgot.
Poplar Road, that's a one-lane bridge, isn't it?
It's a one-lane bridge.
Yeah, I think it is.
And it's in pathetic shape. Now...
Yeah.
I gave you my sob story about the day after Christmas or a couple of days when I spun off the road. I went out there and measured that drop. It's over 10 feet. There needs to be a guard rail there. And I noticed in some of the other places that are older, there is concrete, formed concrete, on where there's those drop-offs. So you now know it's a hazard. We need to take a look at fixing that. And I don't know what guard rail costs per foot.
What's the location again, please?
It's just North Collar House.
On 235th?
235th. Don't ask AAA where it is, 'cause they can't find it.
Story now, I remember that.
So a consideration of that, I believe, is...
Eric, did you hear that?
I did not catch the location. I was in the back office.
It's between Poplar and...
Poplar.
On the west side of the street, just across the...
And there's a big whistle there.
On 235th?
Yes.
Yeah.
And he wants us to consider guard rail.
Okay, that is all. Thank you.
Any other public comments, Mr. Sandere?
Yeah, I've got the minutes or the agendas for the last... Today's meeting and then the previous two, and I appreciate the way it's formulated now as far as approval of accounts. The first one on February 7th, I just need clarification, is what I need, because when I looked at the approval of counts payable at $417,000, and then the next meeting, I'm gonna guess it was split out approval of payroll and approval of counts payable. Now, on the 7th, is that one total... That's...
Okay, so on the 7th, the $400,000...
Yes.
That is approval of counts payable that was paid on the 10th. The next week, we had to do a special payroll or accounts payable batch and catch up some bills, so that amount was paid on the 7th.
Okay. Okay, so then if we just look at the last two, and maybe I should have waited one more week, but the approval... The payroll amounts, how come there's such a difference of, what, almost, yeah, $30,000? Did we... I guess if we lost an employee, would that be...
I hope we're not paying anybody $30,000 a week.
Well, yeah, you're right. And then, you know, I got...
And I'd have to look into that $30,000. I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, curious as to why there just seems to be a large discrepancy on there. So, yeah. Then I was also looking at the other account... Accounts payable here, and I know that you have, as you've told me many times, you have no control over how other departments, elected officials, spend their money. However, looking at page 12, under the sheriff and corrections, their card services, and it appears as though... It almost looks like each several of their employees, quite a few, have their own credit card. But maybe the bigger question is just making sure that any time, especially money spent with a credit card, that wherever that's being spent, that they understand that as a government, county government, we don't have to pay taxes on that. And I guess at some point, I would like to be assured that whoever, you or treasure, I'm not quite sure who does all this stuff yet, maybe does runs a bit of a study on how much money that I already paid to the tax... Taxes in then gets turned around to pay the taxes on things we're not supposed to be paying taxes on. Did that make any sense?
Yes.
Okay.
It does, but wouldn't it be just as easy to ask elected officials to do their job?
I've done that, and then I kind of got in trouble for it. So I'm, you know, I'm trying a different approach. So, anyway. Okay, that's it, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, anything by the old Patty? Anything?
Need a break.
Well, of those same lines, we have all these credit cards, each...
10-minute break. Go ahead. We'll listen. Go ahead.
Each individual sheriff's office, but we also have five corners. So is that billed separately, differently, or not broken down by the officer?
I believe five corners is paid directly for their fuel.
Regardless of who fills it up?
That would be a question for our sheriff.
That'd be a question for our sheriff.
Okay.
Jennifer?
Yes.
The document that Bobby brought to you today, I'm gonna want a copy of that.
Okay.
Do I not mean to blow out the cora?
You would like to file a cora request this little weekend.
Okay.
I'll... But I will... I'm gonna go stamp that that we received it today.
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll get you copies.
Just pick a couple.
I can do that.
I'll let Ann fill out the cora request.
I'll follow you over there.
Okay.
A 10-minute break. Hopefully, I'll be able to get this thing there. Sorry, Jimmy.
Where are you hiding it? You don't hide very well. I guess he knows better than to say anything. Yeah, but I can't bill for legal, sir.
I know, I know.
I can't give legal advice.
I know that.
But he wants me to... He wants me to talk about, you know, what I know, I guess. So, yeah, I could...
And he's going to charge the county what they're talking about.
Oh, I'm sure he would.
A personal...
Yeah.
That's Bill's personal internal. And he's paid... He's in tax pay dollars. How is that weird? I would be crucified if I hired a personal attorney to tax pay dollars.
We wouldn't even go that far. There's a ditch out there by your house. Crucified means we'd have to buy a stake. It looks expensive.
Did you imagine a commissioner doing that?
No, but it's probably not even allowed. Yeah. 'Cause you have... You have him. So you can't hire another one.
It's amazing, isn't it? I mean... I missed all the fun. They didn't have any rants or anything. Didn't have any comments. I missed the commissioner. Jennifer, I'd just like to know who's on first, and that's it.
I'll give you an exclusive, and then a PR news wire will be going out, so it's based on that envelope I gave you. With the subject matter, there'll be a lot of interesting people.
Yeah, you know, this is just a food for thought. I sit in all of the boroughs of the county. It's looking at different cities like Fulton and Bronson, you know, within the county. And I got... One town has seen...
I'm gonna amend the agenda. Yeah.
Shane need one.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, here we go. Yes. Okay. We have to amend the agenda. Give him two more minutes.
No, it's still... We're still under public comment.
Yeah, we're still in public comment. Okay, we're back in session. Public comments.
It's my understanding that the VFW in La Harp, and you all have to help me where La Harp is, and maybe in Moran, the veteran service officer over there has... I don't know him, so I guess if I say he had a stroke and he's not able to help the veterans over there with his... With their claims. And I've tried to get the word out that I would be happy to come over and help anybody free of charge. I don't even charge mileage. I'll come over and help them with their... Keep their paperwork going or whatever claims they have for compensation for disability of our veterans. So...
Thank you. He's good of you. Thank you.
So put the word out, and that goes for Bourbon County as well. I'll be happy to help anybody.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, if... Get that in the paper. That would be big. Hopefully, the paper will put that in the paper.
Okay. Any further public comment? We're gonna close it.
Can I address a comment?
Yes.
Okay, let me get it. Okay, so as I took over accounts payable, I'm just gonna touch on Ann's comment there. I have noticed that a lot of sales tax is being paid. So our electric bill, our gas bill, various things that we have purchased within the county, the city, elsewhere. So I am working to get that removed so that we're not paying unnecessary money that we really don't need to pay. So I just wanted to touch on that. I've noticed it. Working to try to... Try to get that taken care of.
Thank you. And Jennifer, you're doing outstanding job, so thanks for your effort.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay. Commission comment?
Yeah, I'm gonna... I'd like to amend the agenda before commission comments. So I'm gonna make a motion to add two executive sessions.
Okay, I second that.
After... Right now.
Yeah, I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor?
Aye.
Admitting agenda? Aye. Okay.
Okay, let me figure out which one it is here.
Here comes Mr. Counsel.
Okay, here we go.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B12, discuss matters relating to the security measures. If the discussion of such matters in an open meeting would jeopardize such security measures, I guess for the reason that they would jeopardize security measures here at the courthouse, be for seven minutes, return here at 10:29.
Second that motion. On discussion? Home favor?
I mean, it's gonna be two commissioners, county counselor, not yet, Meeks, and Shane Walker.
Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session, but something occurred this morning that we'll have to, I need to get you guys up to speed on, so five minutes, potential litigation, also some contractual issues that we need to discuss. So, there's two issues that we'll discuss briefly within the executive session.
So, employee, so not employer, employee negotiations?
No, this is complete.
Consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Okay.
For potential litigation, and then also, we're gonna talk about a contractual issue that I'm working on. Want to get you up to speed on it.
Okay. Litigation and contract. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body, and she would be deemed privileged in the, sorry, in the attorney-client relationship, be for possible litigation and contractual issues.
Five minutes.
Be two commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for five minutes. We return here at 9:36.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
10:36. Sorry, 10:36. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session, but something occurred this morning that we'll have to, I need to get you guys up to speed on, so five minutes, potential litigation, also some contractual issues that we need to discuss. So, there's two issues that we'll discuss briefly within the executive session.
So, employee, so not employer, employee negotiations?
No, this is complete.
Consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Okay.
For potential litigation, and then also, we're gonna talk about a contractual issue that I'm working on. Want to get you up to speed on it.
Okay. Litigation and contract. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body, and she would be deemed privileged in the, sorry, in the attorney-client relationship, be for possible litigation and contractual issues.
Five minutes.
Be two commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for five minutes. We return here at 9:36.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
10:36. Sorry, 10:36. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session, but something occurred this morning that we'll have to, I need to get you guys up to speed on, so five minutes, potential litigation, also some contractual issues that we need to discuss. So, there's two issues that we'll discuss briefly within the executive session.
So, employee, so not employer, employee negotiations?
No, this is complete.
Consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Okay.
For potential litigation, and then also, we're gonna talk about a contractual issue that I'm working on. Want to get you up to speed on it.
Okay. Litigation and contract. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body, and she would be deemed privileged in the, sorry, in the attorney-client relationship, be for possible litigation and contractual issues.
Five minutes.
Be two commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for five minutes. We return here at 9:36.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session, but something occurred this morning that we'll have to, I need to get you guys up to speed on, so five minutes, potential litigation, also some contractual issues that we need to discuss. So, there's two issues that we'll discuss briefly within the executive session.
So, employee, so not employer, employee negotiations?
No, this is complete.
Consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Okay.
For potential litigation, and then also, we're gonna talk about a contractual issue that I'm working on. Want to get you up to speed on it.
Okay. Litigation and contract. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body, and she would be deemed privileged in the, sorry, in the attorney-client relationship, be for possible litigation and contractual issues.
Five minutes.
Be two commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for five minutes. We return here at 9:36.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
10:36. Sorry, 10:36. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
I wasn't planning on going into executive session, but something occurred this morning that we'll have to, I need to get you guys up to speed on, so five minutes, potential litigation, also some contractual issues that we need to discuss. So, there's two issues that we'll discuss briefly within the executive session.
So, employee, so not employer, employee negotiations?
No, this is complete.
Consultation with attorney for public body?
Yes.
Okay.
For potential litigation, and then also, we're gonna talk about a contractual issue that I'm working on. Want to get you up to speed on it.
Okay. Litigation and contract. Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B2, for consultation with attorney for the public body, and she would be deemed privileged in the, sorry, in the attorney-client relationship, be for possible litigation and contractual issues.
Five minutes.
Be two commissioners, Justin Meeks, be for five minutes. We return here at 9:36.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
10:36. Sorry, 10:36. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
10:36. Sorry, 10:36. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Commission comments?
Did Laura have something?
I, I did, and I'm not on the agenda for this, so I guess, ask you to amend the agenda, because I would like to request a quick executive session with the two commissioners for, talk about non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. We could amend the agenda.
I have no problem with that.
Yep.
How long?
Five minutes.
I make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an executive, one more executive session.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Commission comments?
Did Laura have something?
I, I did, and I'm not on the agenda for this, so I guess, ask you to amend the agenda, because I would like to request a quick executive session with the two commissioners for, talk about non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. We could amend the agenda.
I have no problem with that.
Yep.
How long?
Five minutes.
I make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an executive, one more executive session.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B1, to discuss personal matters
of individual, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, job performance, assuming, job responsibility?
It is not due to job performance.
It's not?
Well...
It's a personnel matter.
It's a personnel matter.
So, you're gonna discuss someone, you're gonna name that individual, and you're gonna talk about their job, do these job performance, or are you gonna... Because if it's a budget issue, or a money issue, you can't go in the executive session. Just, I'm giving kind of parameters of what, so like, if you're gonna talk about what somebody gets paid, you really can't. I'm just, I don't know what it's about, I have no idea.
Hasn't it, well, it's nothing to do with what they get paid. It has to do with, it may have to do with possible litigation later, if, if they're not informed of what has taken place.
So, you're talking about, like, a hostile work environment?
No.
Such harassment? Something...
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just get it out here in the open.
No, 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 no. It's, I mean, it sounds like...
I'm not for sure.
Could be performance-related. It's my opinion, it sounds performance-related, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, right?
It's going to be, well, it, I mean, at the end of the...
It's not her, it's not their performance.
At the, it's performance, it is performance-related.
Somebody else's performance.
The bottom line, I sat through the training, and we actually don't have to say that anyway. But, I mean, we don't have to give a reason, all we have to do is read this, according to the Attorney General.
Okay.
So, I just, we just add extra, so maybe we shouldn't. So, it'd be, still stands as read, be two commissioners, Laura Holdridge, and it'd be for five minutes.
No Justin, no Justin?
Not at this time.
Be for five minutes, and we're going to return here at 10:44.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
Commission comments?
Did Laura have something?
I, I did, and I'm not on the agenda for this, so I guess, ask you to amend the agenda, because I would like to request a quick executive session with the two commissioners for, talk about non-elected personnel to protect their privacy, job performance, assuming, job responsibility? It is not due to job performance.
It's not?
It has, well...
It's a personnel matter.
It's a personnel matter.
So, you're gonna discuss someone, you're gonna name that individual, and you're gonna talk about their job, do these job performance, or are you gonna... Because if it's a budget issue, or a money issue, you can't go in the executive session. Just, I'm giving kind of parameters of what, so like, if you're gonna talk about what somebody gets paid, you really can't. I'm just, I don't know what it's about, I have no idea.
Hasn't it, well, it's nothing to do with what they get paid. It has to do with, it may have to do with possible litigation later, if, if they're not informed of what has taken place.
So, you're talking about, like, a hostile work environment?
No.
Such harassment? Something...
Okay, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just get it out here in the open.
No, 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 no. It's, I mean, it sounds like...
I'm not for sure.
Could be performance-related. It's my opinion, it sounds performance-related, so that's, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like, right?
It's going to be, well, it, I mean, at the end of the...
It's not her, it's not their performance.
At the, it's performance, it is performance-related.
Somebody else's performance.
The bottom line, I sat through the training, and we actually don't have to say that anyway. But, I mean, we don't have to give a reason, all we have to do is read this, according to the Attorney General.
Okay.
So, I just, we just add extra, so maybe we shouldn't. So, it'd be, still stands as read, be two commissioners, Laura Holdridge, and it'd be for five minutes.
No Justin, no Justin?
Not at this time.
Be for five minutes, and we're going to return here at 10:44.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
I second that motion. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.
Aye. And neither here nor there, that did, it was actually some job performance, so, yeah, we're good.
Commission comments?
Yeah, I got one. Every employee of the county, included elected officials, whether that's me and Jim and Nelson, Jennifer, Laura, Patty, Sheriff Martin, who am I missing? That's it. Right? And their employees. When they walk into the door of a county building, they walk in there with their own clothes, nothing else. The computers are owned by the people of Bourbon County. The vehicles are owned by the people of Bourbon County. It is not their personal property. I'm gonna, I'll, I don't think Matt would care. Matt Quick, I know, has vehicles, as for the county appraiser. Those vehicles are the property of the county. They are not the property of the appraiser's office. Eric out at Roden Bridge, the Dozer, the road grader, is not the property of Roden Bridge. It is the property of the county. The sheriff's vehicles are not the property of the sheriff's department. They are property of the county. We have people in our organization, elected officials included, that seem to think that equipment is theirs. It is not theirs, nor is the money that they are given theirs. The money is the people of Bourbon County. I'm tired, I've heard it more than once, it's my money, I'll spend it how I want. It is not your money. It is my money, it's Jim's money, it's Jennifer's, it's Jason's, it's Patty's, it's Ann's, Michael's, Clint's, that's everybody in this room, and everybody else listening, besides the 14,000 other people that live in Bourbon County, it is their money. But, we have elected officials and employees that believe it's theirs. It is not, and the public should be furious at that, at what I just said. Absolutely furious, that we have people in our organization that believe that is their property and is their money. It's pathetic for them to even think that way. Anyway, I just wanted to say, so this isn't directed towards the general public, this is directed internally. So, with us...
Is it private property?
No, no, not directed, I'm not saying it's not directed at you guys. I'm saying that it's your, you, you guys should be mad about that.
What I'm mad about is, we've paid for eight years under jail, and we've not yet spent $1 on principal to pay that jail off.
Well, I'm not gonna talk about that right now, because I'm not sure that's 100% true. But, anyway, the property of the county is the county's, it's not anybody that works for the county's personal property. Now, they may own their own pen, or their own notebook, or whatever, that's different. But, when it comes to the equipment, the computers, the vehicles, the building, it's owned by the county, that's owned by the Bourbon County residents. That's all I'm saying.
I agree with what Cliff just said. The computers in all elected officials' offices belongs to the county, belongs to the taxpayers. And for us to spend money on an outside attorney from the sheriff's department to tell us we're not in charge of our employees is ridiculous. But, we are responsible for that computer. We're responsible for that program. That's what our IT department does, so enjoy your taxpayer's waste of money right there, folks.
I'll reserve comment till next week.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion. Oh, Clint, did you have something?
Nothing, this would be awful, making him... When I was with military, all the computers we had, we had a drill sergeant, and they got in trouble because he was looking at porn on it. Unfortunately, that stuff goes to Fort Huachuca, Arizona, and is monitored, so said drill sergeant got spanked for that.
Well, yeah, well, we, we hope our employees aren't doing that, but anyway...
Saying that's the reason you have a governor on your computer.
Well, you have to oversee the programs, or you'll get viruses if we don't, so. I second the motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Home favor? Aye.